I'd like to call to order the town council work session agenda or town council work session. Note that we have one member absent, Eric, and one vacancy, so the remainder are here. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I'll lead it.
Pledge of allegiance to the public for which it stands, one nation, one country.
So tonight, the first part of our agenda is to deal with a vacancy on the town council. And this part of the meeting is not being livestreamed, but it is being recorded, so it will be available after the meeting is over. We have a number of candidates that have applied and been affirmed as being eligible to serve as member of the town council. And they are Debbie Buckingham, Luciana Burrows, Daniel DeValle, Jessica Irving, Christopher Martinez, Debbie Mean, Mead, and Juan Mejia. Mejia, I'm sorry. So that's the candidates. And at this point, each candidate will be providing a one to five minute introduction. They will receive one minute to answer each question read by the town administrator or the town clerk. And at this point, Samelia, I will turn it over to you.
Hi Debbie, how are you?
Good evening Debbie.
Good evening guys.
So we're going to give you, you have a minute and a half to introduce yourself. And Sharon is going to keep time, so she'll let you know when you can start.
Hi there, my name is Debbie Buckingham. I'm an associate broker for Sampson Properties at this time. I've worked in the beach for 36 years, lived here since 1989. And since October of last year, I familiar myself with the charter of the town, the zoning with the town, zoning code, as well as the water and sewer manual. And I think I bring a big value to the town as a town council member because of those information. Plus, I am also have been familiar with the mayor, I mean, the governor's new bill of 891 that's coming out and it's going to be forced as of October 1st of this year, has to be implemented and put into effect by October 1st of 2026 regarding ADU units in Maryland. I'm done. Thank you.
So I'm going to read questions and then once I finish, Sharon will give you the signal of when you can respond and you'll have a minute to respond.
Gotcha.
In considering your qualifications for this role, please explain what sets you apart from other applicants? What led you to apply at this time rather than the last election unless you were a 2024 candidate? And whether you have any personal or professional relationship with current council members? If so, please identify them.
Well, what sets me apart is the experience that I bring to the town as being a realtor. As a realtor, we know all zoning rules in our area, we have to. We also fight for citizens' rights, land rights. And I have been through the Maryland Leadership Academy. I think that also provides a good essence for this. As for personal, personal experiences with anybody, I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Please share your top three priorities and the strategy you would use to achieve them as a town council member.
Well, my first one would be to, oops, is to implement the governor's SB bill regarding ADU units in the town and the new regulations that's going to be brought on us. Second would be the water sewer manual, as y'all know. And third would be the landlord tenant relationship that is lacking in the town at this point in time. We went from 423 rental licenses down to 200 this year. And I'd like to see that back up to where it should be. Thank you.
This is similarly related. But more specifically, what is your number one motivator that propelled you to file as a candidate for town council? And what is your broad stroke vision for the future of the town?
Number one is to make sure there's transparency to all residents in this town. Not only for what you guys are on your committees for, but for every object or everything that's in the town that needs to be handled by the town council. It's not just the water park, it's not just the water ability, walkability study. It's everything in the town and it should be handled as a group. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. In 2023, residents were, this is, I'm reading this as a quote. So residents were blindsided when they learned that maintenance of their most prominent amenity, the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, had been neglected despite the town having a large surplus of funds available to leverage for this purpose. As a result, the park fell into irreparable condition in 2023 and has been shuttered since. Many of the town, many of the elected leaders voting on your candidacy today pledged to reopen the water park in 2025 or as soon as possible. However, the path to reopening remains unsolidified and will likely require a significant financial investment. What are your thoughts about this situation? And what do you view would be your responsibility as town council representative related to the funding and planning for the restoration of local water recreation to the Chesapeake Beach residents?
Well, first of all, first of all, I was here when the grand opening was way back when. I was one of the original people that went to the water park. That was my second office. I took my kids there every day. I love the water park, alright? I don't think it should be tore down, it should be rehabbed and it could be rehabbed. My husband's in construction and he does tunnels. He works with the water all the time and there's no reason why we can't have that up. It might not be next year, might be delayed. But that's something that we have to look at and look at all of the numbers, not just one or two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, that concludes the questions, so I'll give an opportunity for the council to ask any clarifying questions. And we're going to cap that time at five minutes.
I do not have any questions. Thank you though for volunteering.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions either, but good job.
Thank you.
I also don't have questions.
Thank you.
I've been in that position before, it's tough. I appreciate your, your like, ability to attend all the meetings and contribute that way as well.
Thank you.
Yes, and I would, I would second that because you're kind of faithful attendee. And I'm, I'm very happy that you do that, you know, you keep us all honest. So thank you Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's purpose background noise. I was asking the same question.
It's intentional.
My bedroom, I can sleep in.
Hello, how are you?
Hello.
You go right to this section right here at the podium. But you'll be given a minute and a half to introduce yourself and address the council. And then after that, I'll go into the questions. So our town clerk will let you know when you can start.
Well, good evening everyone. My name is Luciona Burrows and I go by Lou for short. That is my family given nickname and that's who I've known as all my life. I currently reside in Baby Hills. I moved to Calvert County maybe 20 years ago. My son was born and raised here. I'm a born and raised native Washingtonian. I'm also a combat veteran, served my country for over 20 years. I am currently an employee of Prince George's County Public Safety. There is where I am an executive board member of our union as secretary. My love for community started, I would say, being raised in Washington DC. As you all know, it's a big melting pot, very diverse, and everyone pretty much looked out for everyone. And that's why I kind of got the niche, you could say, for wanting to get involved, helping others. I'm passionate, solution driven, tenacious, team worker, team leader. I believe in coming together as one unit to get a problem solved. Collaboration is everything. We can do a round table and beat the horse till his dead into shoes and belts. But what are we doing to solve the actual issue and to come together as one to get things right? Again, I do have one son. I didn't mention that in my resume, but I wanted to tell everyone to their face, I am a mom. My son just turned 20 and so I'm kind of in his ear to either do military or law enforcement here. I will say that I was very surprised to see that Kathleen Barault was given a seat because I know her as Sergeant Barault. She was my sergeant in the police academy. So I was like, oh, that'd be great to kind of follow in her shoes. She's a wonderful person. I was one of her favorites. Kind of a knucklehead, but you know, she, she liked me because of my tenacity. Again, I'm the person that always step forward. If the line is there, I'm the first one there and I'm leading the charge.
Very good. Thank you. I'm going to begin with the questions. You have one minute to respond and the town clerk will let you know when you can start. Okay. So, and the first question. In considering your qualifications for this role, please explain what sets you apart from the other applicants? What led you to apply at this time rather than during the last election unless you were a 2024 candidate? And whether you have any personal or professional relationships with current council members? If so, please identify them. And Sharon will let you know when you can start.
Thank you. So what led me to apply this go around is I entered a new season, I'm entering a new season. I've always been one to do small things around the community, but I feel like it's my time now to try to make a bigger difference. The differences I have made so far are not anything to sneeze at. However, I want to become more of a collaboration, more a part of a larger team where I feel like I can be a little more effective. I've been making small ripples, but now I want to start making some waves and I feel like I can be effective with that.
Thank you. Please share your top three priorities and the strategy you would use to achieve them as a town council member.
Can you elaborate as far as?
So many of our council members joined with passion projects. Some people wanted to see the water park reopen. A lot of council members wanted to see the water park reopen. Others were really concerned about our water and sewer rates. So what would you identify as your top three priorities?
So those are concerns of mine. However, I'm extremely passionate about our vulnerable community, veterans, vulnerable adults, small children. I would like to see Calvert maybe, and even our community, maybe start some type of outreach program where we can help more of our veterans, vulnerable adults. We have a lot of programs in place throughout Maryland and some in Calvert, but I don't see enough when it comes to actual vulnerable adults. We have a lot of things in place for special need kids, but these children grow up to become adults that have the same special needs that need more programming, need more outreach. So those are the things I am very passionate about.
Very good. Similarly related, and it's okay if the answer is the same. What is your number one motivator that propelled you to file as a candidate for the town council? And what is your broad stroke vision for the future of the town?
Well, my number one motivator is the fact that I am a veteran and I've seen combat and I've seen how these things can affect people when they come home and the type of help that they do need. And I feel like me as a veteran, especially a female veteran, can help motivate some of our younger generation to see me step up and take that chance. Although I may not have some of the political town experience, that doesn't stop me from still wanting to achieve and go farther, to gain that experience and be able to help others.
Lastly, this following question will be read as a quote. So in 2023, residents were blindsided when they learned that maintenance of their most prominent amenity, the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, had been neglected despite the town having a large surplus of funds available to leverage for this purpose. As a result, the park fell into irreparable condition in 2023 and has been shuttered since. Many of the elected leaders voting on your candidacy today pledged to reopen the water park in 2025 or as soon as possible. However, the path to reopening remains unsolidified and will likely require a significant financial investment. What are your thoughts about this situation? And what do you view would be your responsibility as a town council representative related to funding and planning for the restoration of local water recreation to Chesapeake Beach residents?
Well, first and foremost, what I would want to know is how are the funds being collected or maybe appropriated for our newly built rotten reel? How some of the newer businesses that are there like the casino? How is that contributing to the betterment of maybe putting money back into the town? My thing with the water park is, and I was just talking about this the other day, is the water park closing down wasn't just for the entertainment of others to come into our county and enjoy, but it's the broader, bigger aspect of it. Those were summer jobs. A lot of kids that were going there to learn how to be lifeguards and maybe one day want to go into the military, be a part of the SEAL team or anything that involves that, they were going there to get that knowledge. That was a place where some of the younger kids that were not necessarily old enough to work the longer hours, I would say for my son, for instance, where they were offered administrative jobs to give them some type of work experience. Yes, it's an income producer and it helps our county, but the bigger, broader picture is all of the other people that have now lost because it's closed. I would like to see the water park brought back up and running.
That's a, that's a strong final statement.
I'm big about the water park.
Thanks Lou. So at this time, the council can, will have about five minutes total to ask any clarifying questions.
So first, thanks for your service as well. There's, there's, obviously there's multiple service members on, on this who I very much appreciate that and your, what you did. I just had one super quick cover. You talked about the vulnerable community and, and I very much love that. Do you think though, specifically to children, that there is enough to do in Chesapeake Beach to provide activities to help grow our youth into mature adults?
Yes and no. So we, although it's not a part of Chesapeake Beach, we have the Boys and Girls Club in North Beach and that's, that's great, but I would like to see some more activities and programs brought about. We have the Northeast Community Center. Why can't we have some type of agenda where there can be maybe a weekly type of program put in place for those children to be able to attend? Whether it's for mental development or motor skills, something that can get them more involved. But I do want to see more for the kids because this summer, looking around, it's a lot of kids with a lot of time on their hands. I feel like if we had more programs in place and things that are useful to kind of keep their brains going, not just something that they can just haplessly do just to keep them busy, but something that's also counterintuitive, helps them learn, helps them be more prepared for when the school year starts, helps them want to get involved in the community, things of that nature.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I just want to say I'm your neighbor on Cox Road, so you see me outside, give me a wave. I'm usually playing with my dogs or something.
Oh, with the frisbee? Is it a collie or a boy's collie?
Yeah, border collie, yeah. That's me. So you mentioned a relationship with Kathleen. Did she encourage you to run when she was leaving or?
No, I saw her name and that's what was like, oh, that's Sergeant Barault. She retired as a major, however, we probably haven't seen each other maybe 15, 20 years. But her name just brought up that whole nostalgia of her screaming and yelling at me when it was time. All those mouths and, you know, and I was always the one that was, the way I was raised is very fit, very strong. So I was kind of the one that always was leading the charge. And I just got off active duty when I joined the police academy. So I was like the class leader because I was the one that showed all the gumption and oomph. So I was kind of like her go to to kind of, you know, rib a little bit and mess with. But I was also the one she saw that leadership skill in, so.
I just want to say, no matter what happens tonight, we would love to have you in any of our committees.
Great.
Waterpark, walkability.
Thank you.
Outreach.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for your service and thank you for stepping forward. I'm going to try to be uniform with all candidates and just not ask questions and just listen to your answers. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions either.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for your time Lou.
Thank you.
Good morning Dan.
You're going to be given one and a half minutes to introduce yourself. Our town clerk is the one keeping time, so she will let you know when to start. And then there will be chimes for when it's time to stop.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Samelia, staff, audience. My name is Dan DeValle and thank you for having me. I look forward to have an opportunity to join you guys on Town Council. And I'm excited to find the official role and things that I've tried to do so much behind the scenes. I know I've worked with each and every one of you, Samelia, Bruce, Jamie, Anthony, Lori, John, and even today Sharon, you know, and look forward to working alongside each and every one of you.
So, in considering your qualifications for this role, please explain what sets you apart from the other applicant? What led you to apply at this time rather than during the last election unless you were a 2024 candidate? And whether you have any personal or professional relationships with the current council members? If so, please identify them.
Well, I did run in the last election and there was a lot that you learned, you know, going knocking on doors really prepares you for the unpredictability that's here. I think the one thing that sets me apart is the consistency, the, to knowing who I am, the knowing what my response is, to knowing if there's a, something I need to do, I'm going to do the research and then I'll have a process. And my process is I'm going to do some fact check and then I might reach out and I'll collaborate. Now, I'll take the collaboration and then kind of go into trying to find a different perspective. Then I might reach out to Samelia, I might reach out to Sharon, I might reach out to each of y'all.
Please share your top three priorities and the strategies you would use to achieve them as a town council member.
One of the three top priorities would be to continue the effort with the water and sewer manual. Some of the things that are, projects that are coming up. Some items with the rental licenses. And then my next thing is to kind of help lend a hand where needed.
What is your number one motivator that propelled you to file as a candidate for Town Council? And what is your broad stroke vision for the future of the town?
Well, I think my, the reason I applied was the same reason that I ran for office and it was to bring what I believe is needed to town. And one of the things I needed, I think I needed is a more of a transparent, more of a working with the town residents, not against them. I think that we have a very great town. There's always that saying, it's good while it lasted. I think we all realize it's good and we just trying to, want to put a little bit of work into it to keep it good and not have the lasted part. So that's it.
The next question is going to be read as a quote. In 2023, residents were blindsided when they learned that maintenance of their most prominent amenity, the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, had been neglected despite the town having a large surplus of funds available to leverage for this purpose. As a result, the park fell into irreparable condition in 2023 and has been shuttered since. Many of the elected leaders voting on your candidacy today pledged to reopen the park in 2025 or as soon as possible. However, the path to reopening remains unsolidified and will likely require a significant financial investment. What are your thoughts about this situation? And what do you view would be your responsibility as a town council representative related to funding and planning for the restoration of local water recreation to Chesapeake Beach residents?
Yeah, I was, I was hoping that it would get open in 2025 or 2026, you know. I, I think I talked about it, the 250th anniversary, I was really hoping for that. But I'm thankful that it didn't get demoed. If it would have gotten demoed and it would have just been the parking lot, I don't think we'd have ever had it back. And, and I think when I look at the conversation, where if I would have been elected alongside you guys, I might not have seen a spot where I fit in. But now I see that I'll, I hear, hey, this part of the conversation's missing. Like with Paddock, it seems like they do want our best interest at mind and, and they're looking out for us. I've talked to Jay a month or so ago about, hey, maybe there's a different way to.
Thank you Dan. At this time, the council will have five minutes total to ask any clarifying questions. We'll work our way over.
No, Dan, thanks for volunteering and putting your name in the hat. I know this is a, you know, none of this is easy, so I appreciate it. I will disclose, because there was a question earlier about relationships. I've known Dan since the campaign. We campaigned together and just, you know, I've had many conversations. I think everybody on this council has had many conversations with him, but I will disclose that since the question came up.
Yeah. I'll just mention the same thing, that Dan and I campaigned together for the election last fall. And so we got to know each other quite well and supported each other during that period of time.
And I appreciate your continued willingness to contribute to our conversations.
Yes, thank you Dan. We know each other. I already told the other candidates that I'm not asking follow on questions. So I just want to say thank you for stepping forward and for everything you've done during the campaign.
Same here. I'm not asking any questions, but thank you for stepping up. And I will say that I know that you're one of the reasons why I'm sitting here and I appreciate that from you. Know as well, but thank you Brian.
Thank you. I guess in disclosure, yeah, I missed that, yeah. Yes.
I think we all have something in common.
Yes, yes. Sorry about that, missed my part.
Well, we appreciate your dedication to the town, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you. And I appreciate the talent and the work that you guys have done. And I would be honored to work alongside you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you Dan.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm going to give you a minute and a half to introduce yourself. And the town clerk will keep time, so be on her signal when you can start.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Chris Martinez and I live in Woodbury Keys, Chesapeake Beach. My wife and I bought our home in 2020, but we just moved here this summer, which was as soon as we could based on our military service. I'm currently United States Army and I'm an instructor at National Defense University. This is our final assignment before retirement. I fell in love with Maryland as a child, spending my summers in Ocean City, Maryland. Nine years ago, we moved to Severna Park, Maryland, where we explored the state and watched our children thrive there. From there, we knew that Maryland was where we wanted to retire and raise our children. I've been in the army 27 years. I've moved 22 times. I've made a career of moving to locations quickly and doing three things. Building trust among people vertically and horizontally, making decisions with limited resources, and adding value by advancing the mission and serving people. I've seen this council do the exact same, earn trust, solve problems and use skills to serve the community. While new to living here, I'm not new to its challenges. I've watched every town council meeting, provided feedback, written feedback to council members after each and have since met with each of you. If appointed, I will help you make informed decisions that advance the platform that you were elected on. But I envision a Chesapeake Beach that stays small with measured growth residentially and commercially, supports local businesses over franchises, enhances how it honors its history and its veterans, preserves open spaces. preserves open spaces, and fosters belonging for all residents and visitors. I hope I've shown my commitment and the skills that I would bring to your council. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Perfect timing.
Look like you practiced.
I read well.
So I'm going to ask a series of questions, and you'll have one minute after each question to respond. In considering your qualifications for this role, please explain what sets you apart from the other applicants? What led you to apply at this time rather than during the last election unless you were a 2024 candidate? And whether you have any personal or professional relationships with current council members? If so, please identify them.
Okay, if I can just repeat that back before you start my timer. What's, kind of what skills I bring, what sets me apart, and if I have a relationship with anyone, and why I didn't run earlier?
Yes.
Okay. I have no relationship with anybody else that's running outside of 15 minutes ago meeting them. Why I didn't run last year, I would have run, but I was serving my country in Europe. I was leading a multinational team that was responsible for writing the operational plan to provide security assistance and training to the Ukraine. That plan was ultimately approved by 32 heads of state, which was ultimately why, partially why, the Ukraine is still a sovereign nation today, albeit a fragile one. What sets me apart? I'm a planner, I'm a team player, collaborator, detail-oriented, and I believe I'm very inclusive in my leadership style. And skills sets me apart. I think I got everything. Did I miss one?
I think you covered everything, and we have some other questions that...
Oh, sure, okay. But maybe it's just a four-part questions.
I know. But you're doing a great job keeping up.
Well, thanks. Go ahead.
Please share your top three priorities and the strategy you would use to achieve them as a Town Council member.
Yeah, so my priorities are your priorities. I am of no illusions here that if selected, I'm appointed. I'm not elected. I think the three biggest challenges right now for the town is to work collaboratively with you to solve the problems that we're experiencing with utility bills, getting to an end state with the water park. And although I'm a believer in achieving results for the majority of the people, this one's a little bit more myopic in nature. I think the individuals at Richfield Station really need to kind of get that road wrapped up. And in terms of a strategy of doing it, I mean, it's the process that we do here in terms of legislation.
Similarly related, what is your number one motivator that propelled you to file as a candidate for Town Council? And what is your broad stroke vision for the future of the town?
Yes, so truth in lending, my retirement is in 2028, and that's when I planned on doing this. And my motivation to do it is just a desire to serve. I got my two little ones back here, and, you know, every day they're kind of looking at the water park saying, Dad, when's this thing go to open? But, you know, I really want my children. It's partially why I actually stayed past 20 years in the military. I want my children to remember me as not just serving my country, but as I transitioned out of uniform, continuing to serve people. In terms of a vision, I think I outlined that in my speech here, but if you'd like, I can repeat it. But I do see a town that stays measured in its growth in terms of commercially and residentially. You know, there was a point in time where there was tremendous growth in the town residentially. Then I think it plateaued from 2010 to 2020. I think, you know, just gradual growth is good. We want to keep it. Oh, I'm sorry. But okay, if you go back to the speech, it's all in there.
We got it. Thank you. This last question will be read as a quote.
Oh, wow.
In 2023, residents were blindsided when they learned that maintenance of their most prominent amenity, the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, had been neglected despite the town having a large surplus of funds available to leverage for this purpose. As a result, the park fell into irreparable condition in 2023 and has been shuttered since. Many of the elected leaders voting on your candidacy today pledged to reopen the water park in 2025 or as soon as possible. However, the path to reopening remains unsolidified and will likely require a significant financial investment. What are your thoughts about this situation? And what do you view would be your responsibility as a Town Council representative related to funding and planning for the restoration of local water recreation to Chesapeake Beach residents?
Yes, so, you know, I bow to the will of the people. I mean, many of you ran on opening that water park, and I believe a water park-like facility or the water park as it is needs to be open, and we got to work towards that. At the same time, you know, I think we owe it to the people to demonstrate, you know, although they voted for it, we ought to go back to them, say, okay, this is what it's going to cost, and is this still what we want? Or is there something else just like that that we want? I mean, let's face it, the water park is built into the woven, woven into the DNA of the town. It's for the kids. We always had something for the kids, starting from the Derby to the amusement park to this. I don't know if it necessarily evolves. I don't have all the information in front of me, but we need to run the numbers. How do we fund it? Do we do municipal bonds? What's the break-even point? I mean, we have to look at that collectively with our budget, look at all the information, make an informed decision. But we need something water park-like, if not the water park, in its same context.
Thank you. But this time, there will be five minutes total for the council to ask any clarifying questions.
No, Chris, I don't have any clarifying questions, but we did meet, so I got to, we talked to Gudbin. I appreciate you tossing your name in the hat, and, you know, thanks for your service and jumping right into community service as you moved back from Germany, so thanks.
My pleasure. Thank you.
No further questions, but I hope to see you around town, and I appreciate you reaching out ahead of time.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you, yeah. And enjoyed the church. We've been there twice already.
Oh, awesome.
She loves it, actually.
Couple of us go there.
Thank you, Chris. I'm being uniform in that I am not asking the candidates any questions, but I appreciate you coming forward and appreciate your time, meeting with you earlier.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Sir?
Thanks, Chris. No questions for me.
Thank you.
And I'll chime in. I'm a veteran too. I'm a Vietnam veteran.
Yes, sir.
Would welcome the opportunity to get to know you personally. Regardless of the outcome here tonight, I appreciate what you've done for the country, for all of us.
Yeah, you too, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
But you will have a minute and a half to introduce yourself. Our town clerk will be the person to give you the signal, and then after that, we'll have a series of questions. So...
Hi, hello, my name's Debbie Mead. I've lived in Chesapeake Beach for four years. My husband and my three kids, we live in Chesapeake Village. I served in the military for six years, and I've worked for, I currently work for the Department of Justice. I've been with them for 15 years. I was a senior budget analyst for many years, and now I'm an auditor. I came to this because I do want to, I enjoy the small-town feel, and I do enjoy the town of Chesapeake Village. Or, sorry, Chesapeake Beach. I do enjoy all the activities and everything the town has to offer, and I'm hoping to serve, make a difference.
So I have four questions for you. I'm going to read them, and then you'll have a minute to respond to each. The town clerk will keep the time. In considering your qualifications for this role, please explain what sets you apart from the other applicants? What led you to apply at this time rather than during the last election unless you were a 2024 candidate? And whether you have any personal or professional relationships with current council members? If so, please identify them.
I do not have any relationship with any of the current members. Well, I've served as a treasurer for, sorry, the words escape me. I served for my previous place when I worked at the prison at Fort Dix. I served there as a treasurer for some of the activities that we had. And then what brings me to want to do this is that, like, my son's always wanting to do different activities, and I'm hoping, you know, being involved in this, I'll be able to, you know, maybe get things started and hopefully to make a difference.
Please share your top three priorities and the strategy you would use to achieve them as a Town Council member.
Oh, well, first I would look at what needs to be addressed and try to see what can be done to solve problems, speak about it, and see what people from the community are wanting, and hopefully through discussions to see if we can make, you know, things happen and just try to make a difference.
Very good. Similarly related, what is your number one motivator that propelled you to file as a candidate for Town Council? And what is your broad stroke vision for the future of the town?
Oh, well, I do enjoy that Chesapeake Village has stayed small, and I do enjoy that the schools are really nice and that I hope to keep it that way and see if the town would, you know, try not to expand too much, but try to make a little expansion so that way maybe bring in more funds through the expansions and just try to see what can be done to help the town.
And this last question will be read as a quote. In 2023, residents were blindsided when they learned that maintenance of their most prominent amenity, the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, had been neglected despite the town having a large surplus of funds available to leverage for this purpose. As a result, the park fell into irreparable condition in 2023 and has been shuttered since. Many of the elected leaders voting on your candidacy today pledged to reopen the water park in 2025 or as soon as possible. However, the path to reopening remains unsolidified and will likely require a significant financial investment. What are your thoughts about this situation? And what do you view to be your responsibility as a Town Council representative related to funding and planning for the restoration of local water recreation to Chesapeake Beach residents?
So, I did serve as a budget analyst for many years, and maybe we could look at maybe our finances and see if there's something that's missing that could be used to resolve that issue and see what other, maybe have fundraisers or little things just to build up the funds to get the water park reopened.
Thank you. So at this time, the council will have five minutes total to ask any clarifying questions.
I don't have any questions, but thank you very much for tossing your name in the hat and willing to step up for your community. Thanks.
Yep, I echo that, and I welcome you to join any committees that you have an interest in.
Yes, thank you for stepping forward. I haven't asked any questions of any candidates. That was my plan going in and sticking to it, but thank you so much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions either.
Thank you very much, Debbie. Oh, wait, Mayor, do you have any questions?
No questions, but thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Hello.
Hello.
You'll have a minute and a half to introduce yourself. Our town clerk is going to be keeping time, and once that finishes, I'll have a series of questions for you.
Great.
Oh, on her signal.
Great. Well, thank you, everybody, for taking the time. My name is Juan Mejia, and I have lived in Chesapeake Beach since June of 2021. We first moved out here when my, shortly after getting married, April of the same year, my wife and I purchased our first home out here when she wrapped up law school and got an offer to clerk for a judge in Coward County. Meanwhile, I had the opportunity to continue maintaining my career in Washington, DC. So we moved out here after doing a couple of FaceTime showings. You know, the market was all still a little funky in 2021, so moved out here and admittedly did not know what to expect. But four years later, I can say I am the happiest, most fulfilled I've ever been, and I think living here plays a big role in that. We recently welcomed the first baby boy into the family, and, you know, things couldn't be better. I could not imagine the life I'm living now, and I think living here at the beach plays a big role into it. So when I saw the opportunity for the vacancy was announced, I wanted to submit my information. I think that I possess a unique background. During my day job, I work as a federally registered lobbyist. So if it's not here doing city government, it's working at the federal level. So familiar with the structure, and I really want to get involved in my community and really, you know, give back in such a short time, you know, moved out here, lived in the DC area for almost a decade now, but really quickly have, you know, this place is home. So I really want to give back and just volunteer my time any way I can.
Thank you, and congratulations on the new baby.
Thank you.
So we have a series of questions. I'm going to ask them after each question. You'll have a minute to respond. The town clerk will keep the time. In considering your qualifications for this role, please explain what sets you apart from the other applicants? What led you to apply at this time rather than during the last election unless you were a 2024 candidate? And whether you have any personal or professional relationships with current council members? If so, please identify them.
Sure, absolutely. So for your first, for your first part, qualifications kind of for the position. I'm in a unique space. I work with lawmakers and their staff on a daily basis, federal regulators, agency officials, administration officials over now the past three presidential administrations. So I certainly think from an experience standpoint, I know the relationship, you know, relationship building. I know what it takes to kind of continue hammering through the process, having faith in the process, and really kind of understanding that what stakeholders are all involved in the decision-making process. Government was not designed for speed, but it can nail policy if it's done, if it's done right. And I think that that, I've had the opportunity to get, you know, a few wins, more losses probably on my belt if you were to go through the career record, but I think you, there's lessons in that failure and the opportunity to really kind of engage at this local level with the macro experience that I have, I think, again, is a bit of a unique skill set. To the second part, why didn't I apply during the previous election opportunity? Didn't really, I'm sorry, just did not, you know, maybe I didn't want to put myself out there, but I'm here today. And I think when opportunity comes knocking, you have to, you don't question it, you just go all in.
Thank you.
And really quick, as far as like professional, personal relationships, respectfully, no, none. But I do know that, you know, I'm...
Neighbors, but we haven't really...
Couple down the street, you know, you live a couple houses down, but I think other than the occasional wave, I think that's kind of where we're at.
Please share your top three priorities and the strategies you would use to achieve them as a Town Council member.
Yeah. Well, the first one, I think, would be to admit that I don't know what I don't know. I would want to immediately get, you know, either one-on-one time or through a working session or kind of off-hours, get to know what you're working on, you know, what the experience has been, and honestly, what you're also looking for in a working partner. Like I said, I'm still relatively new to the beach. I think, you know, when I speak with people, they make sure to let me know that I'm one of the newer people at the beach. But I think with that comes the strength of, of, you know, I'm not looking to make incredibly radical changes. I, like I said, I'm new. Nobody, if you ask somebody who's been living here for 10x what I've been living here, they may say that my opinion is invalid because I'm new. But what I want to do is maybe not totally dabble in some of that nostalgia, but also understand that people, there's so many unique things about this city that make it great. Completely changing and upending those may not be in its best interest, but also embracing that we're in 2025. It's, you know, the economy of 2005, even then, 2015, crazy to say that, it's already been as long as it has, but really work with you to make sure that we can keep things affordable and make this, you know, the best place to live in Maryland.
Thank you, Juan. Similarly related, what is your number one motivator that propelled you to file as a candidate for Town Council? And what is your broad stroke vision for the future of the town?
Yeah, absolutely. My inspiration was that I love it here. I, you know, I walk my dog through the, down the boardwalk every morning, and actually, just last week, I saw somebody stop their car, lower their window, take a picture, raise it up, and then keep, you know, keep going about their commute. Like, that's the feeling I get when I first drove down here, and you see the flags, and you see kind of the grandiose welcome that you get here. You know, I, again, I admit, living in DC, you kind of have all these blinders. You don't know what's out there. Heck, sometimes you don't even need a car to get around. I know I didn't the first few years that I lived out there, but this place is special. It's special, and it has so much charm that I think can be retained. But similarly to my previous point, I also think that we can all work together to make this... to make this place the best place to live, not just in Calvert County, Southern Maryland, but places as a whole. I think it offers a unique perspective. I know I'm not alone in that, you know, you can continue maintaining your life in DC. You can build a career, and also kind of build your family here. My wife works in Prince Frederick, so, you know, I understand the value of, you know, developing not just the beach, but also making Calvert, you know, an incredibly attractive place.
This final question will be read as a quote.
Good.
"In 2023, residents were blindsided when they learned that maintenance of their most prominent amenity, the Chesapeake Beach Water Park, had been neglected despite the town having a large surplus of funds available to leverage for this purpose. As a result, the park fell into irreparable condition in 2023 and has been shuttered since. Many of the elected leaders voting on your candidacy today pledged to reopen the water park in 2025 or as soon as possible. However, the path to reopening remains unsolidified and will likely require a significant financial investment. What are your thoughts about this situation? And what do you view would be your responsibility as town council representative related to funding and planning for the restoration of local water recreation to Chesapeake Beach residents?"
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. And, you know, when I first moved here, kind of still post-COVID, vaccine was rolling out, the park was still shut down, actually. So I feel like I've only ever known the water park as somewhat empty, you know, not as, you know, not as much foot traffic as years past, but I've heard a lot of great things. Again, same thing from the reminiscing angle. Some folks say I had my birthday there every single year. You know, it's such a special place. It was an amazing place. Now that I have a son, you know, I look forward to the day I can walk him over there, and we can, you know, we can have a great time. I grew up in southeast Texas. We had Splash Town right down the street. A little bit, you know, everything's bigger in Texas, not to brag, but it was a little bit, you know, it had a little bit more, it was a bigger campus than what's there, but the premise is still the same. I think there's a way that we can embrace it. You know, it's a charm, it's a hook, it's something that the city can offer. It's also something that can bring in revenue if we get it back up running sooner rather than later. But also just being mindful that it's got to be an, you know, if there's a way to modernize it, to keep it open year-round or just make it an annual revenue maker, then there's a way you can do it without completely siphoning all of our city resources in the process.
Thank you, Juan. At this time, there'll be five minutes total available to the council to ask any clarifying questions.
Great.
Yeah, well, first, thanks for tossing your name in the hat. It's a big commitment. You even said, you know, maybe I wasn't sure I wanted to put my name out there at first, so I appreciate that. I do want to circle back to a question specific was, this entire council and administration ran on a completely different platform from the previous administration, and there were some significant changes that we all ran on. Of those, like, that you heard from the town, what were, outside of the water park, because I think that's been beat pretty, pretty strong here, what were maybe like one of the other two issues, one or two issues that you thought are a high priority for our community that you aligned to?
Yeah, well, you know, when we first, when we first moved out here, I heard so many good things about Calvert schools. It was before, obviously, we had started our family, and, you know, I kind of always asked myself, like, you know, what constitutes a good school? And then I heard that the new Beach Elementary School was gonna, was gonna come up. Obviously, anytime there's kind of massive infrastructure projects underway, environmental holdups, whatever you want to call it, it can really, really, really delay the process. So I was hoping that we would see an opportunity to actually get the full building, you know, re-scale done, and it was really encouraging to see that. I think, you know, I think now you can make the argument, Calvert, I mean, Calvert's always had great schools, but now we also have new modern, you know, updated facilities too, which I think are important. So it was encouraging to see.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, no questions. I just want to say you remind me of me when I first moved here. Like, your enthusiasm and your love for the town.
Oh, appreciate it, yeah.
Your new, congrats on the new boy.
Oh, appreciate it, yeah.
Yes, congratulations on your new baby. I am not asking any questions of any of the candidates because you have answered our questions already, but thank you for stepping forward.
Appreciate it, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I have no questions, thank you.
Thank you for stepping forward, and we ought to get to know each other better.
Absolutely.
I mean, we only live about six houses away from each other.
I think so, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, look forward to the Christmas lights.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, thanks, Mary.
Thank you for your time, Juan.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
Do you all had an Can you guys step outside, please?
Hey.
Thank you.
We know Jessica Irving.
So there was an additional candidate, however, they did not show up. So at this point, you can cross off Jessica Irving's name on your ballot, just FYI. And I will hand it back over to the mayor.
All right. At this time, have they ever been given the paper? Okay, you've already got the form for the first round. What you want to do is to, you're gonna, you're gonna be, you've got all the candidates' names on that. Right now, the opportunity exists for council members to speak to your fellow council members if you've got anything to say, and I'll just go left to right. Jamie, do you have anything that you want to say to the rest of the council?
Um, no, I think I'm good. I would, yeah, I'll hold mine for the next.
I mean, neither.
Laura?
Um, yes, I'll hold my comments as well.
I'm holding mine as well.
Well, that went really quick, so we should have called, that's the lightning round, right? Yeah, okay, so no wonder it's called the lightning round. All right. So now, each of you will vote for your top three candidates, and you'll put that in writing on the form that you've been provided to the town administrator. The vote is anonymous, and there should be no identifying information on the sheet of the paper other than the top three candidates that you have personally selected. Once you've got them done, okay, town administrator will collect them and shuffle them. All right, and we'll give her a chance to sit down with the town clerk and tally the votes. And in the meantime, we can hear the, what is it? The Jeopardy clock ticking in our head?
I'm not putting Miss Sharon on a timer, no, sir.
It's true. And thank you all for your participation tonight. This is obviously very important, so. I think I can break the tie in the third round if necessary. I don't think that you can do absentee ballot. All right. Okay, so the results of round one, the three candidates, should I list them in order, just in order? I mean, just by the name. Luciana Barros, Daniel DeValle, and Christopher Martinez are the three, top three candidates. So now, you will take a new sheet. And are we, are we making a new sheet for them? Okay, you've got them. Okay, so did you, okay, did you note those top three on that sheet? Please do so. It's Luciana Barros, Daniel DeValle, and Christopher Martinez. Okay, and so, at this time, each of you has the opportunity to speak, to make a comment prior to the final vote. Let's start with you.
No comment.
Comment.
No comment.
Jamie?
I will just make the comment that I will be voting in order of, for the folks who align the most to the campaign that we ran in 2024. We ran on a transformational approach, and we promised and made promises to the community based off of that to not align to the prior administration, be that so. That is my approach. I won't disclose names, but that's what I'm going after.
Okay, no other comments? Okay, moving along. At this time, we'll do the round two vote. I'm just going to read this verbatim. Each member of the town council will select their top two picks from the top three. Write their selections on a piece of paper as in round one. The town administrator will tally the collective results. The town clerk and/or the town attorney, she's not here, will verify the tally. Once verified, this information will be provided to the mayor and recorded for public records. So go ahead and indicate your top two out of the three that made it through the first round, please. All right. Hello. Wow. Sharon and Samelia to tally the vote. It's being recorded, but not livestreamed. And I think the intent is to stream it later after the vote is final.
Mayor? We'll need a tiebreaker, so you'll need to cast a ballot.
And I'll collect your ballot once you've done it.
Does he only vote on the tiebreaker? Or does he vote?
Just on the tiebreaker.
Okay.
This one?
Yeah.
Drama.
So I do feel like we're back at elections when we were watching them count and stuff.
It's kind of like Jeopardy. Where's the Jeopardy music?
Yes, yes, watching them.
Okay. So this is our top two, so we're going to vote. We're going to do round three now?
Yes, for the final.
Okay. And the two surviving ones are Dan, Daniel DeValle, and Christopher Martinez. So make your single selection between those two. You're getting your steps in. And the final winner is Daniel DeValle.
Yeah, and you want to say that.
I just wanted to tee you up for the clap.
All right, and, okay, moving right along. The candidate, Dan DeValle, will be approved and sworn in at the August Town Council meeting on Thursday, August 21st, at 6:30 PM. So I think we need to bring him back in. Okay, we're going to call five, five-minute recess. Are we going to notify him?
Nothing coming now, the recess is now. It's just to give an opportunity for Wendy and Sharon to set up the live streaming. Yes, well, I certainly can. Yeah. Would you like to know about them there?
No, you can, I'll just be your support team.